By the God, we look to you this morning and we're thankful for the blessings of life you've shared with us until now and we're mindful of those that don't have the blessings that we do. We're mindful of those that wear a badge and protect our freedoms and those who serve in the capacity they do and we pray for peace. We ask you would grant us wisdom this morning that we make decisions that would be to your name's praise and honor and add to this prayer with prayer in Christ's name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
They will send the email, any corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Second, on paper.
Aye.
Three, zero. For calendar year 2016, our fifth payroll totals $211,719.31. We have a total of 182 claims totaling $349,382.11.
Motion to approve the payroll and claims?
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Two, zero. Okay. Monty, you are first.
Good morning.
Morning.
We have 81 inmates, Niner DOC, and you have our annual jail report. I think the only other thing we had today was you had contracts for putting inmates on, applying them for Medicaid when they get out.
That was, all the corrections correct?
Yes, yes. And the last email you got from me, Lisa Scroggins said they were going to work all the inmates and at 14 days rather than 30. And the email I sent out said, okay, the statute allows the sheriff to do that, but he has to do it for 30 and if that's the way they work and for that fee, I didn't see any problem with that. So I made that change.
Do we want to approve it pending something back or we have?
Monty, I asked Monty if it was okay with him and he said fine, so he signed it and if, I would recommend the commissioners vote to approve it and sign the contract and we'll send it.
Just information wise, this is passed by legislature last year that we're required to offer this service, so.
Statute requires, the statute requires the sheriff of the county to be, to make an application or assist an inmate that's been incarcerated for more than 30 days to assist that inmate in making a Medicaid application. Which if you've ever done that is a lot of fun.
Yeah.
And it's done online and so anyways, statute also authorizes the county commissioners and the sheriff can hire that to a, let's see, what's the term?
Navigator.
Navigator, yeah. And so the company that does the inmate care service is, they do this for a number of counties and they're also getting into that Medicaid navigator business now and they'll do that, I forgot what the flat fee was, is it 20, 30 bucks, something like that?
It was $15.
15, yeah. So it seems a good decision rather than sheriff person, county sheriff personnel having to learn to make Medicaid applications, so.
And train them in ongoing.
And train them, yeah. So it looks, it looks like the next up, we're also having a contract with FSSA and so it looks like the county needs to, will have to pay the state share of that, but the bonus in that, what's in it for the county is that at least we'll get the federal portion that will.
Yes.
Pay the inmate healthcare.
Well, it might save us.
This is on hospitalization.
Right. It might save us so because the hospital charges us Medicaid plus 4%. Now, if we only have to pay the Medicaid back, it'd save us that 4%.
So you're talking about reimbursing the state for the state share at Medicaid rates.
Right.
Uh huh. So that's the explanation, do we have a motion to allow us to sign?
What's the term of the contract? Is it a yearly with the navigators? Is this for the navigator or for the state?
Navigator.
Okay. And the term with navigator is a year at a time or do we know? Or indefinite? Is there a termination clause?
This had inherent.
I think it had a termination.
Termination in agreement, 30 days in advance by either party, this agreement is terminated.
Okay. Because last time we, there was some language in there about they could charge us at their cost for extra time spent on the application.
And I asked Lisa about that and usually what she was talking about, the extra costs, some health departments will charge them to get inmates per certificate.
And I know you took care of that, but there was something in there also about if they had to spend extra hours, it was their hourly rate. So as long as we have an out, if they start charging us and we're not liking it, we want to be able to.
Agreement may be automatically renewed for excessive one-year period unless a party either gives 60 days notice prior.
60 days.
Yeah, the term of the agreement is through the end of the year and it automatically renews unless we give them 60 days notice or.
But we can get out at any point with 60 days notice also.
I don't know about that, let me see. Notwithstanding, any party may terminate it with 30 days. That would be at the last paragraph of.
So we're safe.
Last paragraph, last paragraph of five.
There you go, gotcha.
Okay, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Kind of always got me, we had inmates come in with Medicaid and once they're in jail, they stop their Medicaid and then they have to reapply for it after they get out.
Yeah, I mean, once, if they're incarcerated, they're not eligible for Medicaid and all we're talking about is that under these set of circumstances, they could be eligible for hospitalization by care or cost.
Okay. That's it.
Thank you, Monty.
Thank you, Monty. Ed, you are next.
Hey Ed, you gonna touch on our meeting we had at the church?
Sure.
Just touch on it a little bit when you get it. Sit on there. You're on it, thanks.
First thing I have, and I'll let you guys go ahead and sign the memo, copy of the annual report. Usually I have five copies for you to sign, but there's two of the places we send them to, we can scan them and fax them to them or email them, so.
This required all three signatures, correct?
Yes, yeah, all three, all three copies.
Annual report to the state. So I need to enter a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the annual report.
Second.
Okay, on paper? Aye.
One copy stays with Bath, one copy stays in our office, one goes to NDOT, one goes to State Board of Accounts and one goes to LTAC.
This really just kind of a summary of everything you've brought to us through each month.
Yeah, yeah, it's just something we're required by law to do, we have the annual report and we'll file it. I don't think mine has to be filed until June actually, I give you six months to do.
You're ahead of schedule.
Get done and get out of the way.
That's right.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Second thing I have is I got three quotes for a pickup truck, a regular cab pickup truck. I really liked the surveyor's pickup truck because it had toolboxes in the side of the bed, but it only comes in a six-foot bed and I wanted an eight-foot because there's times I carry signposts out that are 10 or 12 foot long and stuff like that, so I decided to go back just to regular pickup truck. There's the three quotes. Heidi Chrysler Dodge was low, $25,694. Family Ford was at $28,458 and then the Chevy was at $28,736.75. So my recommendation is to go with the Dodge. I think they said probably about eight weeks before it would come in.
So is this in addition to what you have or replacing something?
This is a pickup truck for me, so when you hire my new engineer, he has a pickup truck to drive. So I figured I better get something coming, so he has a vehicle available.
So we can probably think this over and decide later or do you want to do it today?
I'll just do it.
Do it today?
Yeah, just move it off the table.
Go for it.
Make a motion to approve the Dodge.
On paper?
Aye.
Three, zero, go for the Dodge.
Next thing I have is this actually came through Toby, this is a request from Indiana Fiber Network for a tow cable line along 100 East between 224 and 700 North on the west side.
Just need your approval on that.
I'm just saying.
Is this what we did in.
Greenwich Board, probably.
Correct? We need everybody's signature?
Yes.
Okay. This is that fiber optic drop, we need a signature on, so I'll have, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Indiana Fiber. Indiana Fiber Network. I think it's something for Norwalk High School. I'm pretty sure it's something for them. They're moving Norwalk, connect to something on 700 North.
Three or four.
Four.
Guys still have to wait on me to sign.
Oh, will you?
Yeah.
Right away form.
On the project.
Let's move on. Okay. Just an update, we had a meeting up at Zanesville with these three road projects to get right away forms signed. I thought the meeting was well attended, Kevin was there, a lot of good questions, stuff like that. We're getting them in, we're down to like two on a hair north, one of them is at Acres Incorporated. The other one, I talked to the guy last week, it's in a trust, so he has to get his sister from Indianapolis to sign it. It should come back in this week. Two on 950, had Roy redo one of the forms up there, the guy is concerned about his fence, so we actually put it in a right-of-way agreement that we would probably remove his fence and put him a new fence up on the new right-of-way line because he wants to try to keep people out, stuff like that. Whether he'll sign, I don't know. And then another one on that road, we have not heard anything from them, so I will contact my contact person and have them get ahold of them. On 400 West, we had an issues with one that Roy's trying to get ahold of the attorney that did the estate seven or eight years ago and get things worked out on that one. Couple others, we know they're coming, we just haven't got them in yet. One guy's in Arizona, but he's been in contact. Another one was concerned about, he had two properties and we only had one right-of-way form, but Roy had included them all in one form, so we're pretty sure that's coming. I think there's only one person that we have not heard from up there, so we think them are coming in, stuff like that. So hopefully them continue to progress. Did talk to the AE people last week again, stuff like that. He did give me more of a timetable on when the stone will be available. We're probably going to get the stone from actually over in Huntington County, that's where he thinks they're going to be taking it out. Right now, he's telling me the end of June is when that might possibly happen. I'm going to get back with him probably the first of April and try to tie some things down and talk to Jared Hahn about finding, or getting some dirt up there. I assume he's throwing something at you about doing some more two-stage on Eight Mile by the landfill. Hopefully.
Not today.
Not today. Okay, anyway, that's, I have a place to get dirt from. Through him and stuff like that with maybe some projects he's going to go, so I'm going to work with him and let him know when we're going to possibly need it. If that's the case, then we'll probably start working on these probably in May to make sure that we can get stuff ready so we're ready whenever the stone comes available. Sure. The more I talk to him, I ask him about the driveways in Wells County and he says what's going to happen is once the project's done and hooked up, they will take the stone out of them driveways in Wells County and then between their east leg in Wells County and their west leg in Huntington County, they have to put driveways back in and they're actually going to remove towers. So pretty well what he was telling me is probably the stone in June is all you're going to get because they're going to reclaim that stone and put it in the driveways. Now, he said it'll probably eventually come out of them driveways, but he says after you.
Not in our period of time that we're going to work.
Well, and like I say, with that going out of one driveway, back in another driveway, he's not sure what kind, what's going to, what's going to be like.
Finished products.
Whether there's going to be a lot of dirt in it and stuff like that, he says, we just don't know. And when that's going to happen, after them towers come down, he couldn't even tell me that if it's going to be like next spring project or next summer project or whatever. So it sounds like that we'll probably move forward on these three and at least get the base stone down for them and then move on with that and stuff. So hopefully things, hopefully the right-of-ways keep moving forward and we get things worked out and all that stuff, so. The road conversion thing that was put out, we have received 11 forms back in. We've had a lot of interest, a lot of phone calls, stuff like that. I think you'll get a lot more of these in whenever we start signing up for desk control and people come in and do that. I think you'll have a lot of people picking them up and sending them there in a pile that they can turn back in and stuff like that, so.
And that deadline's May 1?
May 1 is when we put on there to review them.
Okay.
Yeah, which is going to work out good with the desk control because usually that's our deadline for our desk control too and stuff like that, so. Speaking of that, I do have out to the companies to get quotes for our desk control product. They should be back by the end of the month. Hopefully it'll be the same, maybe a little bit less, is what I'm hearing from a couple of my asphalt people.
Hopefully with oil dropping and I don't provide product.
Right, right. Just some of the other stuff we're doing, it's on and off, plowing snow, sanding, been doing, of course, the brush mower, finished in Jefferson Township, working in Liberty Township. We should finish that up today or tomorrow. So actually, I ran the brush mower in five townships this morning, which is not normal because usually I don't have that much time to, all that stuff, so. Been grading roads. I'm saying winter's over. We pulled some standards out this morning and getting everything cleaned up and we're going to start hauling some stone this week and starting to do some pothole patching, not a whole lot out there, but every once in a while, we have some stuff that's starting to break up a little bit. And I will, I'll be at road school this week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, so. Anything else for me? Of course, you see Toby's not here, so since he's not here this Monday, I won't be here at your next meeting, so I'll be in Florida.
Good.
Any questions for me?
No.
Okay.
Ed.
Thank you.
See you at road school, Ed.
I know it's too late to register, but I've been invited to come down.
I don't think winters should go.
You can show up anytime.
Probably have to decide tomorrow.
You going down there?
Okay.
Went and patted on it.
All right.
We'll roll the red, rip it out for you.
I must get in the mud, I know.
You are next, yes.
It wasn't a stick, it's not a long drive.
Good morning.
Have a copy of this? Did you guys get this from your doctor?
No. No, it's all perfect.
Well, that's because I don't have one for my top now.
Here, you want my take one? I'll let you. You sure? All right.
We can share one.
We can share one. Okay. Well, I'm Molly Hoag from CADA, I'm the president of Citizens Against Drug Abuse and this is our annual report. If you just look at the top, the amount that we had this year to give out for grants was We do fall under some requirements of the state and the state requests that we spend a minimum of a quarter of that amount in each of the categories. And those categories on the left side, admin, education, prevention, treatment intervention, and then judicial. So we accept grant proposals in January under these topics in order to help prevent and treat and enforce issues related to drugs, alcohol, tobacco and other drugs under that umbrella. And so on the far right column, you can see what CADA board is recommending to give in accordance to these grants. So you have the agency on the left, their project title, who their contact person and then the amount they requested, and then on the far right is what CADA is recommending that we give them. And these are all based on stipulations through the grants, requirements of the state. And that minimum requirement of 173674, if you notice, the subtotals under each category don't actually meet that in all the categories. And the reason for that is we either didn't have enough requests, like in the bottom for judicial and actually in treatment and intervention, we got the amount requested for that one, but the grant for baby and me tobacco-free was for incentives and we cannot give incentives, so that was a stipulation from the grant from the state. So there's reasons why we didn't meet that minimum and in, in order for us to proceed, then we have to ask the state for permission to move money into different categories. So we requested that, we put the additional money into education prevention and so, and we did get that approval, so we have that already to move forward. So these are the recommendations that we are submitting to the state and to you and the council tomorrow. And we'd welcome any questions that you might have on any of these.
So just the minimum requirements they asked for is a quarter of the amount to be spent?
Yes.
Okay.
So that it's evenly, basically evenly distributed among the categories.
Okay. Got it. So basically you're taking that 17 off your 69, 46, okay. I don't have any questions.
Fine, please. Do we need a motion?
Need to approve it, motion to approve.
Second.
On paper?
Aye. Thank you.
Here's your copy of that from your notebook.
If you want to keep that, hang on.
I'll put my.
Thanks.
It's in a spiral, did you need that for your notebook? Oh, okay, thanks.
Yeah, I got it right here, just like steel trap, that's what I was doing with man. And it's 25%?
Yep.
It's amazing, right on. How to do that?
Nothing else in the audience, so right now, I'm trying to bet on that report.
Okay, the only couple things I have, I think would refer to Roy on, is the ordinance to remove the restrictions on the Oak Road and then also do we have the, are we doing the agreement with FSSA?
I have it.
Okay, you have that too?
Yeah.
That's the only other two things I have, so I'll let Roy follow up with that stuff.
On the Oak Road ordinance, Sheriff Fisher suggested that there still may be some problems with the bridge there at Markle and maybe it might be best to hold off on removing that for a while if commissioners are in agreement.
He's out in the field, he would know, so I'm okay with postponing until maybe at a time he tells us he'll be okay.
Okay, then with the FSSA. I circulated that to you, so I'm assuming you've had an opportunity to look at that, if you're agreement, it's typical with 800-pound gorilla, no negotiation.
year to give out for grants was $6,946.96. We do fall under some requirements of the state, and the state requests that we spend a minimum of a quarter of that amount in each of the categories. And those categories on the left side, admin, education, prevention, treatment intervention, and then judicial. So we accept grant proposals in January under these topics in order to help prevent and treat and enforce issues related to drugs, alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs under that umbrella. And so on the far right column, you can see what CADA board is recommending to give in accordance to these grants. So you have the agency on the left, their project title, who their contact person, and then the amount they requested. And then on the far right is what CADA is recommending that we give them. And these are all based on stipulations through the grant's requirements of the state. And that minimum requirement of $17,3674, if you notice, the subtotals under each category don't actually meet that in all the categories. And the reason for that is we either didn't have enough requests, like in the bottom for judicial, and actually in treatment intervention, we got the amount requested for that one. But the grant for baby and me tobacco-free was for incentives, and we cannot give incentives. So that was a stipulation from the grant from the state. So there's reasons why we didn't meet that minimum. And in order for us to proceed, then we have to ask the state for permission to move money into different categories. So we requested that we put the additional money into education prevention. And so- and we did get that approval, so we have that already to move forward. So these are the recommendations that we are submitting to the state and to you and the council tomorrow. And we'd welcome any questions that you might have on any of these.
So just the minimum requirements they ask for is a quarter of the amount to be spent?
Yes.
Okay.
So that it's evenly, basically evenly distributed among the categories.
Okay. Got it. So basically, you're taking that 17 off your 69, 46. Okay. I don't have any questions.
Need to have permission to approve.
Second. Thank you.
Here's your copy of it from your notebook. It's in a spiral. Do you need that for your notebook? Oh, okay. Steel trap. That's what I was doing with the man. Is 25%?
Yep.
It's amazing. Put it right on. How to do that?
Nothing else in the audience, so right now, trying to bet on that for your folks.
Okay. The only couple of things I have, I think, would refer to Roy on, is the ordinance to remove the restriction on the Oak Road. And then also, do we have the- are we doing the agreement with FSSA?
I haven't.
Okay, you have that, too?
Yeah.
That's the only other two things I had. So I'll let Roy follow up with that stuff.
On the Oak Road ordinance, Sheriff Fisher suggested that there still may be some problems with the bridge there at Marco, and maybe it might be best to hold off on removing that for a while if wishers are in agreement.
He's out in the field. He would know. So I'm okay with postponing until maybe at a time he tells us he'll be okay.
Okay. Then with the FSSA, I circulated that to you, so I'm assuming you've had an opportunity to look at that, if you're agreement. It's typical with 800-pound gorilla, no negotiation. Sign or die.
Do we really have a choice?
Sign or die.
Those guys in Indianapolis do for it.
If you want to be in the program. But- and it's signed and date in blue ink?
Oh.
Yes, I remember something was in-
Did you bring that?
Yeah. And so they prepared the contract to be signed by one person on behalf of the county executive being the commissioner. So that's for your consideration.
So it's as good as it's going to get, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Motion to approve and permission for the president to sign.
In blue ink.
In blue ink.
Second.
Okay.
Bye.
And a blue ink pen. Three. And then I have to send it via Federal Express, so I even got the envelope already.
I'm not sure why we have to sign something that they make us sign, not really giving us permission.
Didn't date it.
Oh.
That wasn't part of the motion.
I even put in the date, and then I read it. Oh, you got to date it in blue ink. All right.
I did put the 7, right?
Yeah, you did.
You did.
They can't fill until today. It's kind of a check.
Oh, shows you were working and thinking.
And that's all right.
Anything else?
I- but I sent it yesterday. I saw Rick Smith in the courthouse Friday and asked him if he or Beth had got any response to the draft of the procedures and policies that Beth circulated on email, I think, February 8. And Rick said he had not heard back. And the only thing that I did is shortly after I saw that, I thought that the provision regarding all contracts or expenditures, or I forgot what the wording was, had to be approved by the commissioners. And I knew from prior work with some other officials that the commissioners had by ordinance adopted a purchasing agent policy. And so I told Rick Friday, I said, "Well, I'll, if you don't mind, I'll put in those provisions and then recirculate that." So I did that, and I'm not asking- I'm not suggesting you take any action other than these are things that we need in place, because by June 6, Beth has to certify that the county has adopted that.
Yeah, we should have it at the next meeting, everything, so we should be able to adopt it at the next meeting.
I read through it, and I saw your changes, and I thought it made sense with what you had highlighted.
The statute says that it's going to be- the legislative agency for the purposes of that provision is the commissioners. The draft was something to be approved by both commissioners and council, and it had more to do with policies and this and that. And that's great. So my resolution, in my mind, is here's the ordinance, do what you're supposed to do, and say you formally adopted the SBOA's minimum standards, but then incorporate by reference the policy that the county officials have worked out. So if that seems like a reasonable solution, that's what I'm suggesting.
Then that gets us time to start the training, because we'll probably have to have three or four training sessions set for- let's see if we do this in March, probably in April or May. You know, we'll probably set training sessions up so all employees can get trained.
What we're talking about is that the states passed a law last year that requires the county to adopt minimum standards and procedures with respect to fiscal accounting and also adopt a definition of materiality. So if you didn't adopt a particular definition of materiality, then any discrepancy in public funds of even a cent would require action. So the city of Bluffton's adopted their own policy, because all the legislative, all I forgot what the term was, all local governmental units, and we have the same thing with the solid waste district, management district, because they have the power to tax. So all local governmental entities have to adopt a definition of materiality, like at what point in time is- are they required to report things to the State Board of Accounts, as well as an opportunity to adopt internal procedures with respect to try to prevent malfeasance. So that's what we're talking about doing.
I think I made mention to you, have a few bad apples, and then put policies in the fact that it costs everybody more time and money and everything else, so.
We shall play nice together.
We'll play nice in the sandbox.
Nicely together. No throwing a stamp.
All right. Anything else?
I think that's it.
Okay. Beth, anything else? No. Tim?
Do we update our rescue funding policy?
Thanks for bringing that up.
If you don't mind, Mr. President?
Go right ahead.
Per your very nice article in the paper Saturday, thought a little more about that. And I think as we move forward a little bit, I'll talk with the board a little bit about, you know, there seems to be some questions in the different departments on what they perceive as proper, you know, fees to be reimbursed. And I think with the city of Bluffton kind of leading the charge in terms of the amount of runs that they have and the amount of shortfall that they receive financially, I think that we'll address it a little more seriously. I know the county council, based on what they've said, thought that the funds were appropriate, and they were kind of looking for some recommendations by us. So moving forward, I think we'll look a little more into that, try to get some more run information from them, from the various departments. And, you know, it seems to be that Bluffton will be the one that will be- the one that will be more concerned about in terms of what their requirement for repayment would be. So I think that's what we'll focus and time.
Thank you.
Audience. Quiet.
Good to see everybody.
Yeah. Thank you for coming. If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.